All right, good evening and thank you all so much for being with us tonight. We're ready to call this meeting to order. At this time, we're going to ask Councilman Wilson if he would please lead us with our invocation this evening. Councilman Wilson?
Pray. Eternal Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to assemble where we are here to do the business of the County of Winsburg County. Dear Lord, ask you to bless this meeting and make it fruitful for what you would have it to be. All these blessings we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Councilman Wilson. All right, at this time, we have the minutes from our public hearing and regular county council meeting dated December 19th, 2023. Is there a motion to accept those minutes as a part of the record?
Motion to accept, Miller.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Miller. We have a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been carried. We also have the minutes that need to be approved from the public hearing and regularly scheduled council meeting dated January 8th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes for no two days, Mr. Supervisor.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Woods. Is there a second?
Second, McKnight.
All right, we have a second by Councilman McKnight. Excuse me, are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. Ordinances, there are no ordinances for first reading tonight. There are no ordinances for first reading tonight. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. There are no ordinances for third reading tonight. There are no ordinances for third reading. And I believe we have one appearance. We have Ms. Anita James of Salters, who wants to come before us and speak for a few minutes about the St. Lawrence Community Center pool. Ms. James?
Hello, everybody. How y'all doing?
Oh.
I'm not gonna be long, brief. I just want to bring to attention because based on what you had told me last time regarding about...
Speaking to the mic, Nina.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it... Based on what you had told me last time regarding about DHEC, um, was that you had spoken to them regarding about the pool and all like that. And I had spoken with them also in reference to the things that I've just showed somebody that a long time ago when Tiffany was here and she got a contractor to go to the pool and all like that. I already had been there. I already showed my representative, talked to him, told him what was up. The same thing that you were about to do or had done already. I already got what you need. I already told Mr. Kelvin Long that I already have what you need. But she didn't want to do it. Now you're about to do the same thing. Why are you double dipping? I just want to know. Double dipping meaning doing the same thing. Okay?
Okay, let me, for point of clarification for the other members of council. Um, myself and Ms. James had a conversation a while back as it relates to the St. Lawrence Community Pool. As you all are aware, DHEC has closed that pool down and the pool cannot be used until significant repairs have been made. Now, our former representative, Representative, um...
Right.
Um, McKnight, our state representative, former state representative McKnight, was able to secure some funding to get the repairs and renovations made to the pool. But the amount of money that he secured was not enough money in order to make those repairs and renovations. And we have not secured additional funding, either through state, either through additional funding from them or additional funding within the budget in order to go ahead and have enough money to get this pool and all of its renovations and repairs completed. So that's where that project stands at. As we begin the budget process here in the next couple of months, that particular project will be back on the table again. And at that point, we can make a decision on how we want to move forward with that project. And that's where we are, Ms. James.
Um, okay. Got one more thing to say. Okay. You know the other pool that you was telling me about, the King Street one? That it does not belong to the county?
Okay.
It does, according to DHEC, and it's coming out of the accounts payable. Yeah, dude, the county does own that pool. King Street nor Department of Education owns it. It is owned by him.
Well, you're telling me something that I'm not aware of, ma'am. I've never known.
And like I told you, I found out about it. Like I said, I did my investigation.
Well, okay, do you have, well, do you have any documentation to...
You got it.
No, ma'am.
Oh, excuse me.
Wait, wait a minute.
Yeah.
You're coming before this council and you're telling us that we own something that none of us are aware that we own.
Oh, yeah, I know.
All right, my question is, do you have any documentation with you to show proof of what you just said?
Not with me because it was closed over the weekend, so when I found out...
So I'm going to assume that that answer is no.
No, I just said no.
You do not have any documentation with you?
No, but you can go upstairs and talk to your people.
Until we can get information to...
Like what type of information you want?
Well, if, if...
There's...
No, if you're saying that we own...
You do.
That property and own that pool, then there should be some documentation saying that we do. Okay? And so I'll be glad to take a look at it, but that's the first I've ever heard that, ma'am. But I'll be glad to, I'll be more than happy to look into that for you. All right, are there any other questions that you have for this council?
I just found out something else, but, uh, I'm waiting on that one.
Okay, very good. Do any of the members of council have any questions for Ms. James? All right.
So, oh, wait a minute. You did say about around April or May it should be open? Is it gonna be open?
It's probably not going to be open by April or May because we have not secured the additional funding, as I said earlier.
How much are you asking?
We've got, well...
You got $250,000.
We have $250,000 that was secured by former...
Contractor to give you a amount?
Give me a moment to respond. We have $250,000 that we have secured from a former representative McKnight. During the budget process, we will try to secure the additional funding. But we're going to have to bid that project out to make sure of what the cost estimates are going to be. Because at this time, we don't, we don't know what they're going to be. We've got a general idea of what it may cost. But until you have a vendor to actually bid on that project and give you a dollar amount of what it's going to cost to make those repairs and those renovations, you're not going to know. And so until we get that documentation in place, um, I'm not, we're not going to move on that project until we know what, how much it's gonna cost and where the additional funding is going to come from.
At the present time, since the last time that Ms. Wright had did a construction bid, $20,000, okay, additional, and a partial demo of the pool, which DHEC and I also said that the kiddie pool can be closed because it does not work. By me being lifeguard, what, years ago, that pool, that the kiddie pool has never worked. And we decided, you ain't gotta worry about that. All you have to do is just worry about the big pool. And the big pool, all you have to worry about is just one little part, uh, which is the pipe going from the pump, okay, from what was said. And Ms. Torquoz, who was on the Recreation Department, had pumped out and I don't know if she looked at the rest of it. Did you look at the rest of it? You didn't?
Ms. James, you have to, I'm sorry, but you have to direct your questions to us. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Well, when she had drained it, drained it out and all like that, I was hoping to see where the pipe, okay, because there's a pipe that sucks the water in and all like that with the pump, whether that was working or not. And I, we could not see that with the DHEC because the pool was nasty and everything like that and it wasn't drained. So I just wanted to know.
Sure, well, we, we have to have a licensed company to come in and bid on that project because of the scope of that work. But that is something that we'll be, um, preparing and giving to this council as we begin the budget process within the next few weeks, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate you. All right. All right, the next item on our agenda is executive session. Um, we, according to section 30 dash 4 dash 70A1, we have a discussion of a personnel matter concerning the emergency medical services, or better, also known as EMS. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
To move, Mr. Supervisor.
We have a, we have a motion by Councilman Wilson to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we will be in executive session. Thank you. All right, we will be in executive session. Thank you.
So move.
I have a motion to come out of, excuse me, out of executive session by Councilwoman Hales. Is there a second? I have a second by Councilman Leo. Ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there were no decisions made in executive session. No decisions were made in executive session. The next item on the agenda is council supervisors, county supervisors' report. And the only thing that I have to report is that in the next week or two, we will be doing a one-year update on our first year in office, and we want to bring the community and the citizens up to date with current, with different projects and different things, and so we'll be making that announcement in the next week or two. Is there anything from any of the members of council that they'd like to report? Anything from any of the members of council?
Mr. Supervisor, just to remind everyone of the presidential primaries coming up once again. The Democratic primary will be on February third, with early voting beginning on the twenty-second, and the Republican primary will begin on February twenty-fourth.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Councilman Wilson. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Wilson to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Miller.
I have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions?